Okay, any public correspondence?
No.
Nope, okay. Okay, consideration approval of the special me uh meeting minutes from January twenty third. I've got him in front of me. Do I have any discussion on it or anyone that has any changes? Uh can I have a motion to approve them as presented?
Same.
Uh all approved.
You got a second?
Second it.
Oh, James can second.
He can't, James was absent.
Yeah, I left it.
Cause we were in the meeting, ah.
Yeah, he was absent. There he is. Okay, um. Uh. Let's see.
Did you take, did you call for a vote?
No, I didn't call for a vote yet. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And.
One upsets us.
One upset, alrighty. Uh consideration, okay. Now, consideration of appointing Morgan Stanley as a town of vessel outsourced chief investment officer for the town retirement account executive session that we had. And now we're at the point where we want to discuss it and see if there's uh any other further discussions on it before we make a motion to approve it.
Uh I know Melanie's been going back and forth on some stuff. I think they're there enough. And I don't know if you agree, Myra, that I think it's not finalized, but I think we're close enough that instead of having to have another board meeting in a couple of weeks or whatever. I think. I would feel comfortable with the board voting it, and I don't know how you feel.
Absolutely, I mean, I've seen all the correspondence back and forth and you know, put my two cents in where I thought it made a difference, but I, you know, I think the contract is. I don't know what, if they're still quibbling over anything, I don't.
No, we're there, we're there.
I thought practically we're there, so I think that we should recommend to the selectmen that they uh. It has to go to the board selectmen, right?
Uh, we don't could go back to see if they. I don't know if they ever approved it pending this board approval. Mary would look at that.
Okay.
But so with the, the board is likely to meet again on Tuesday, so hopefully uh Melanie is away, but they meet every the first and third Tuesday.
Right.
So if they can't meet that August fourth date, hopefully by the eighteenth. Uh but yeah, I think the motion would coming from this board would be to approve going with Morgan Stanley as the OCIO um and send that recommendation to the board select.
And that they sign the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, began charter. Yep.
Yeah.
The only question I had is I saw last month the insurance liability and I think that issue was solved.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So.
And um I don't think it was any other issue and I had saw the thing and agreed, I think I sent back saying, you know, I agree too.
Yeah.
No problem. But I think we are ready for a vote.
Yeah.
So, wanna make a motion uh?
Why can't one of you guys?
Yeah, so I make a motion that we um recommend to the board of selectmen if they sign the Morgan Stanley outsourcing contract. I guess, is that the motion that I need to make?
Yeah, Mary.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, so all approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh so approved. Great. Yeah, great, so we can take the next step on that now.
Yeah, uh so we'll get started on the templates through the IPS and come out ready to go at the next meeting. Uh we get you, you know, brief. Go through Brad, anything that we think you should have before the meeting.
So, so one of the questions that I would have is um. We need to revise the IPS in accordance with recommendations of of the outsourcer. Um will you, how are our existing asset management arrangements going to be treated? Are they each going to be reviewed? I mean, I know that they're all managers that are approved by one arm of Morgan Stanley, but they may not be the ones that the outsourced CIO group tends to use, so how how will that be?
Yeah, you're you're demonstrating you understand how this works. Uh yes, Morgan Stanley is a big place and all of the managers, so the good thing is you're custodied at Morgan Stanley already. So the assets are there, so we don't have to do any gymnastics with that. Uh there's some te- technical things like the number on your account will change to a different branch because it's gonna be in the OCIO world now. The um, the investment managers themselves currently are all already approved, you know, they're approved on Morgan Stanley's platform. The reason that some might change is only because OCIO, the institutional platform actually has access to more options and in certain cases, more favorable pricing on SMAs or mutual funds. So we will do a full review of each holding and we, there, you probably will see changes, but it's not because we don't love, you know, what you're in now, it's just.
There's no hard feelings.
Right, 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 there's a whole new set of things available, so. But we'll do it step at a time, you know, IPS first and then confirm and asset allocation.
And then, I mean, I know that that we are um delegating that role to you to select and approve the managers. Um but will you, as as part of this process of onboarding and stuff, will you be telling us about your decision making and why you're, why you're making?
Yes, of course, that'll become, you know, new part of the quarterly reports will explain any changes that were made, why they were made. Uh you know, along with the performance and everything else. And we're happy to also report out on on fees, you know, how the fees might change.
Well, they're gonna be slightly lower in some cases, I think you said.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, which is good for them, I mean, that's a positive move in and of itself. And the other question I have is um, do we have to modify our investment?
We are gonna do that.
Yeah.
We're gonna do that, you're gonna be involved in the process.
All right, so in the next meeting, we should uh have that ready to review.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and you'll bring that up and uh we can look at it.
We'll lead and be ready for approval.
And you'll have input.
Okay, just because it, like, I know you introduced yourself before the meeting, but can you introduce?
Sorry.
Now it's part of a recorded meeting.
Yes, sorry.
Like Raj, Raj is in California on a road show, Kevin's on vacation, Robin's part of the team, so is Mark.
Yeah, nice to meet you all, I'm Robin Moss, I'm a member of the Morgan Stanley OCIO team. So you've met Kevin and Raj before, we are a team along with Mark's and it's just the. We're the team that specializes in government entity pensions and TAF Hartley multi-employer union pensions. So all those clients at Morgan Stanley look at our, our small and mighty group. Uh so I'm excited, you know, I'm working with Mike, we are a team on this, we're the same team, so it's not like you're, you know, switching off one to the other. We work together um to make the relationship work, so you can reach out to any of us, all of us, and you'll get the answer you need or, you know, you'll get to whatever objective outcome we need.
And your background, Robin, how you got to the OCIO group?
Sure, I've been with the group now for three years, but before that I spent the decade doing the same thing, portfolio management before families and smaller institutions, so I was on the ultra-high net worth side, now I'm on the institutional side. I'm originally from Southern California, uh but I've been in the Northeast most of my adult life. So, California girl somehow ended up out here.
Orange County?
Um Pasadena, I like.
Hotter geared than it is there.
Today, yeah, yeah, yeah. It happens once a flu.
So it's also time to look at the two plans, um uh Robin and I were talking a few weeks ago, really as separate plans and have separate IPS. It's the, uh we'd always talked to Milliman about what the point is, they're both long-term, but and the one bugaboo is gonna be the assumed rate of return, if the, if one town does justify a more conservative plot share, that's gonna increase that amount, so we'll talk it all through. But we'll ha- we're gonna go have each plan have its own, the two plans have its own uh unique uh IPS and uh you can see now the, the, you know, how the difference between the police and the town and and controversies versus distributions and they're just, they're, it's it's time now, draw a line and say it's not treating them as existing plans.
Well, one's a closed plan, one's an active.
Yes, and and so over the last five years, it's been me and Milliman going back and forth, when we do it and with Scott, it was always like, you know, these things are still both long, but it's, I think it's time to do it and do it right.
Well, we did. This board actually started separating it and not a little bit um last November when we voted, when we, I say we, but the board members voted to adjust the police plan back to a fifteen whereas the town plan, I think, they're both at eleven, they were locked up with each other, but we switched some of it um because one's active and one's not. So I think we're, we, the board started recognizing that difference already and I think it's just the next step.
Yep, yeah. A question, a low sap, uh was that following here too?
Yeah, well, we're gonna cover the low sap, the low sap wouldn't be with OCIO.
No, I didn't.
Five hundred thousand dollars, it's not a pension, it's, it really is a funny.
It's mutual fund.
Yeah, it's a mutual fund version of, you know.
Yeah, so that really isn't part of it, okay, that's gonna be said.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Okay, so uh I guess what we should do here, now we got performance review.
Yeah, so uh. Plan ended at six thirty and uh for the second year in a row, we had double-digit return in both plans, uh ten point three three in the town and a ten point four eight uh with the police for the six thirty year end. Uh just a reminder, there is smoothing by Milliman, so I'll defer to them when it comes uh you know, when it's time for their meeting to talk about how much of that return is actually captured. So in the last twelve months, there you can see, ten point three three percent. Um up six point oh two from twelve thirty-one to six thirty, we'll get into the sort of what, what built that. But fascinating to look at the five-year number of eight point eight two because um if we can go back to twenty twenty-two, we're gonna remind ourselves of, I call twenty twenty-two the second worst year in my thirty-year career. I mean, it wasn't oh eight, but to have, you know, stocks and bonds, worst year in the history of bond marketing, or that we talked about this before. And that, like, right in the middle of that five-year, what a recovery markets have had and and the fact that, you know, claims up fifteen million dollars over that timeframe. On the next page, you can see um, you have the breakout of the three categories, stocks, bonds, alts. Well, uh we started the year, our stocks are up nine point one percent. Right, double that, if you want to annualize it, assume the second half of the year is like the first. We started the year with the S and P trading twenty-two times forward earnings, which I don't think anyone would argue that that's not towards the expensive side. Um and you know, Morgan Stanley's had a real conservative view and we haven't been a huge fan of the mega-cap technology stock that have been dominating. Um, you know, life lesson two for everyone, it was in April liberation day that the S and P was down nineteen percent.
Yeah.
And what if Bethel went in some panic selling spree? Uh S and P this morning up eight, it's a thirty percent move, so. You know, life lesson in twenty twenty-two, life lesson in this year that, you know, stocks are volatile, stocks have volatility, uh right? And that going in a panic spree is never a good idea. And uh and we just look back the last six months and if you can't absorb that lesson.
Yeah, I don't know where that was the best quarter uh performance in over five years.
Yeah, and what a time to buy, as always, assuming you have time. Uh also, international is really trounced at the United States because as rich as we are in valuations, uh you leave the country, even with all the awful wars going on, you have uh international markets literally uh you know, up north of twenty percent, depending on which one you're looking at, we'll get into our funds, you'll see that. Um and really, that seems to be what um, it more of a valuation play because they're not trading, you know, they haven't had this dominant um, you know, fourteen-year run. But I like to remind everyone about the lost decade, right, two thousand to two thousand and ten, where the S and P five hundred annualized negative half percent and domestically, you know, capped by oh eight, but you know, if you were all domestic during that decade, you accepted a zero percent or a negative rate of return over a ten-year period. I remember looking at uh 400 K menus at that time and looking at the ten-year return and not seeing a positive number. I mean, that was humbling to say the least, but emerging market did really well, international MLPs, so diversified portfolios did okay during the last decade. And so it'd be naive to sort of look domestically, okay, you know, we are doing so great, why do we own anything outside of that? And uh just take a look at this year or the last twelve months and and you'll, you'll change the story. Once again, large companies beat small, right, so uh we had a broadening out of participation, it wasn't just the Mag Seven, uh but you know, now it sort of feels kind of back in that Mag Seven kind of world where you know, things like Bitcoin are back to an all-time high and and, you know, a lot of speculation and maybe some sugar high market probably is ahead of itself. Earnings were good. Uh you know, Morgan Stan- Morgan Stanley, our firm, Lisa Challet is, is expecting a normal, healthy pullback in the fall once we're through that. So up nine percent in stocks and we'll get into the sector specifically. Uh bonds, uh portfolio, bond portfolio up three point five eight. Uh bonds have been fascinating uh to watch this year, particularly the beh- behavior of treasuries, which uh are the safest, most liquid asset in the world, why does China own it? Why do, why do our people that, countries that like us own it, they don't own it because they like us, they own it because it's the safest, most liquid asset in the world. And we had some real kind of unusual times during, you know, the tariff, you know, discussion when both stocks and treasuries were going down in unison. And you know, treasury yields were spiking, uh you know, bond prices were falling and uh that certainly scared a lot of people. Um no mystery, the massive amount of debt the United States has, and we keep piling on more and more and more. And you know, at what point, you know, right now, we're still the cleanest dirty shirt, but you know, other world currencies and other, you know, are sort of a dogfight out there to, to become the dominant player and as, as you know, fortunate that we are, that we are still pretty dominant, we are less dominant than than we were in the past. I mentioned, you know, Bitcoin and crypto, which um personally, I don't own any, I don't have any clients in it, no wonder I think it's appropriate for for this, but uh back to an all-time high and if you talk to one of those Bitcoiners, I mean, they really obsess over the debt and treasury and why it's an alternative, and I'm sure everyone has their own opinion, but uh.
Terrific.
Here we are at a hundred, yeah, thank you, me too, uh that's a good word. Um today at two o'clock, uh forty-five minutes, we're gonna get the Fed uh decision on rates, uh all indications are. I'm sure you've been listening to the bickerin', you're probably, it's in the front, front of the news of, you know, Powell has seven months left. He's holding steady because of the unsteady of the, you know, unpredicted area of tariffs and, you know, Trump is barking like a loud mouth to to have him cut and, you know, what a strange predicament. Um you, you, you've been in the business, Myra, for a long time, to have a Fed that we know is gone in seven months, holding steady and and that, you know, this, this awkward dogfight of of, of the two powers uh kind of going at it. So with that being said, treasuries this morning, uh the thirty-year at a four-nine, ten-year at a four-three-seven. Uh I haven't seen the five-and-twos below four in a while, they both are. So bond prices have, you know, treasury prices have, I've, I've used the word normalized, but um, you know, they, they've sort of, you know, made, you know, kind of cooled off uh in that regard. So, you know, municipal bonds have it, have had a lousy uh year to date, but uh, you know, we're treasuries and uh, you know, seven and nine-year investmentary corporates and you'll see the twelve-month return on Sage is almost seven percent. Twelve-month return on the BlackRock is a little north of five. So we uh, we, we see our bond performance there of three-five-eight. Um you know, we were fortunate in twenty twenty-two to be very uh overweight treasuries big time because you know, the, the aggregate was down twelve and our bonds were, were only down three, so kind of winning by not losing there. Um alternatives have done their job, uh we are limited uh with the existing into two small sectors, MLPs and real estate. With, with the OCIO coming on board, you know, Morgan Stanley, if you look at our seven-year and our twenty-year and the secular and strategic sort of, and it's not just us, BlackRock being going, you look at the strategic seven and twenty-year return and uh, you know, there are some alternative investments that are uh clearly way out in front, you know, for what it's worth of expected uh rate of return, expected rate of return still has to happen. Uh our MLPs, if we ever, if we're, if this portfolio were all in MLP, MLPs for the last five years, we would have annualized twenty-three percent. Um just uh, just an amazing return to excellence, I mean, MLPs got lambasted in COVID, but um for the ten years before COVID started, they were very quietly the best performing asset class um out there and uh so we have us, you know, a five percent precision in MLPs. And then real estate, which uh last twelve months has done almost ten percent. Uh not really exciting returns year-to-date, but the, so we had, you know, return from all three of sectors.
I'm like, if I could, um what's Morgan Stanley's opinion on interest rates in the next six months, do they have any opinion?
Yeah, I mean, we're no different than the rest of the street of a Powell or Trump debate, that, but that if Fed funds is four and you know, inflation, PPI, PPI is in the low twos, there's definitely room to cut. Uh but we have, Morgan Stanley's also similar to Powell saying, well, we gotta see what these tariff effects are. But uh, you know, Morgan Stanley's opinion, it's two rate cuts this year, potentially. Um that, that's the latest um that we see.
All the headlines from, all the headlines from today say they're very likely that it just hold.
Yep, well, today, today, I'm not talking today.
No, September's the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're saying that there's an increasing odd that it'll go maybe before or after September, maybe, who knows?
Seems to change every day. We know where two guys stand. Um so participation, I'm looking down the twelve-year column. You know, our large-cap growth managers underperformed, as you know from previous meetings, they are underweight uh mega-cap tech, underweight mega, uh the Mag Seven, uh but still at fifteen and ten percent rate of return. Uh value up double-digit, you know, the one, worst performing sector, mid-cap uh growth. Um and you know, just running pretty quickly, but you can see down at uh, you know, the small cap, double-digit return knocking on the door of nine point eight nine. And really blowout performance from our international managers, up twenty-six and sixteen in the last twelve. Uh BlackRock, which I mentioned, five point nine six, and Sage, which is our intermediate term, you know, uh bond manager, six point seven. Uh next page, you got uh MLPs up nine and uh Alarian down, I'm sorry, up, up nine as well. Um so, you know, another second year consecutively of double-digit performance return. Um you know, at the next, once OCIO is officially taking over, we talked a little bit about it. Some of these managers may or may not be there, we're gonna explain why and who and how and uh much more actively manage approach, discretion, really a, a dream to someone who is managing pensions, as Myra will back me up on. Uh to have the ability, not just quarterly, but when it makes sense to uh, to jump on a, a reallocation move.
More dynamic.
Yep. Hand on the trigger, so uh last, uh just a quick summary, and this is no mystery. You know, as contributions and distributions happen, each of the investment slots have a thirty percent sleeve, so there's constant reallocation. So almost every time I'm here, you're gonna see the fifty, forty, ten or something real close to uh inside the portfolio. Place plan, same, 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 so this will be brief, uh but uh slightly higher return because it is a different plan, ten point four eight, fucking basis points. Uh but to actually, that, you know, really, the, the blessing to the police is there still are net contributions going in. Uh Brad does a great job of making quarterly uh contributions to the plan, uh very smooth and uh make sure it's done and uh so um, you know, you'll start to see the police plan and the allocation change, you know, based on the, you know, those factors. Uh so very similar returns uh across the board. Um LoSAP, uh we can get into or just keep it brief here, but I just brought a one-page summary, so uh LoSAP is not a pension plan, LoSAP is uh very, very, very different and uh we basically run a mutual fund and ETF portfolio mimicking the changes of the other two plans. And uh so you have, you know, really, really, really similar returns um and uh won't always be perfect, but it's, it'll be similar until we change that strategy.
Now, there's kind of no of that, people are withdrawing too now, right?
Yeah, so for the last number of years, we haven't contributed anything to it and it held about seven hundred thousand, but in the last few years, we've had a lot more uh firefighters that qualified for it, start taking it, so starting in the twenties, when the twenty-six budget out, in the twenty-seven budget, uh I'm gonna have to start budgeting, start funding it.
And Myra just, yeah, I was just about to, so um if there's two volunteer fire departments and you need to have hazmat training every year, you need to be on at least five onsite tragedies, I call them tragedies, they're gonna work for it. It, there's a, whatever, and then you, you're accumulating up to a, Brad, sorry.
I think it's two hundred and fifty bucks.
Two hundred and fifty for the.
The length of service, LoSAP is length of service and work program. So it's, it's capped at, it might be three hundred dollars and it's closed, so it's only people that, they closed it right around the time I started fourteen years ago. Uh so it is a closed group, but since it's closed and there's no contribution, they don't put anything in it, it's just the town. Um for a while, we didn't have, it was growing enough to cover whatever was coming out.
Mm-hmm.
Um but they closed it thirteen years ago, all those people in it are now thirteen years older.
Right.
Um so you're getting more of those people that are drawing on it, thirty-six hundred bucks or three grand a year, it sounds a lot, but when you add, add up, whatever that adds. Um so before the next budget, I have to go through and look at like what we should start funding it. My guess is we should be funding it, but do you know what the run rate in, on it right now is, Mike?
On a grand for?
Yeah, so we're not gonna go from zero to a hundred in one budget, so we might drive it down a little bit, but we might need to get back up. Um but we'll see, there also is a closed plan that some of these people that have been honest for the last thirteen years might come off of it.
We don't have a cash flow page.
No, uh so the um first date, we wire out and then they take it over, so but the last annual distribution was a hundred thousand and with no contributions, Myra.
Well, I told Mike just to make at least a hundred thousand, but it's not a hundred thousand on five hundred.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, he can do Bitcoin.
Robin's gonna find a way. Oh, you guys aren't getting this now, huh?
Yeah, but I'll mimic.
Yeah, right.
You know, yeah, want the town to buy four Bitcoin with it?
Yeah. Exactly, four Bitcoin, I, I, I don't want to be sold it on. So, that's the performance review.
And what's our venue, we have six and three quarters now, I think. Um you know, for our.
A quarter.
I'm talking about the um uh actuary report, so our actuary.
Our assumed rate of return, you mean?
Yeah. Yeah, it's six and a quarter, I believe, so.
Yeah.
Um but it's not gonna be exceeding, but I, we'll talk about that more in the November, but right now, my thought, we just leave it, I'd rather.
Well, Milliman, Milliman has, Milliman will, will have an opinion on that and they've, they've agreed with you thus far.
Um.
Well, they, well, they, because.
They always want to.
Myra, in twenty.
Oh yeah, we've come down.
Well, I mean, yes, that's, that's happened across.
Right, no, exactly, as you know, as you know.
But the uh, just the fixed income used to make eight.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, lots of gains.
Yeah.
Uh that's when we had GMOs, what, thirty-five years ago, I think, something like that.
And the town auditor still has to approve.
Yep.
The rate, don't they?
I don't think they approve.
They approve, they, they, they just got them all the stuff that they need.
Yeah, because most of the audit committees that I've sat on, the auditor opined on whether they thought the rate was recycled.
Yeah, so in our annual report, say we put in a rate of return of twelve, right? They couldn't, they couldn't make us change it, but they could surely give an opinion on if they thought it was out of line. And then I'm sure they would.
Get an auditor opinion with it.
Yeah. Uh which hasn't been a conversation with our auditors for the last five years because we've been driving it down when it was appropriate. Um and I don't, right, come November, it might be a different conversation when we meet again, but like right, right now, the conversation would be, let's leave it alone.
And Milliman in there, remember, like, they'll, they'll look at the asset allocation and then use the seven and twenty-year sort of reference model. They have it in their presentation, who they're hanging their hat on, maybe it's even them internally, but if they say, if the asset allocation showing something different, they're gonna have an opinion on it, you know.
Yeah.
One, one question on our. One, one question on our town, people, how is our withdrawal coming now? There's more people retiring over time.
On the town plan?
On the town plan.
But that's why you see, if you look at it, it's, the net contributions are negative one point five.
Yeah, we're not adding money, we're taking money.
Um, but it's still also funded at over eighty percent. That one's closer to the ninety. Um, and we'll see what the ten percent does to it for this year, uh, but that group trinks.
Right.
I think when I started, there was like a hundred and forty active and. We're gonna be under eighty, if not closer to seventy, active members of it.
Maybe town employees all in a four oh three B or whatever.
All the new ones, yes. And that's been the case since, I call them new, but it's been like twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
Around that time.
About nine years.
And who runs that plan?
State.
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's not with the state, it used to be, so it's with Voya.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
Um, so that, that's, once we get past, I know we're, we think we're past all the OCIO stuff. That's probably the next, at some point, not our November meeting, because that one's already kind of busy with all the, like. At some point, like probably the January meeting, we should note to have Voya come in and talk about it.
Right, and we should be keeping an eye on that, too.
Yeah.
And that building, I take.
Yeah, but that, um, we have no, it's because it's, we have no say over what people do with it.
Right.
Well, but we have a say over what options are offered.
Correct, I think some of it, because it initially was a state plan, I think. We haven't really looked at it much, but we should have them come in and talk. Every once in a while, they come in and talk to us. So the last time, like Dan and I met Voya, like six months ago, uh, but we should have them come back in.
What's the town matching on that?
So it depends on the group, it's either six or seven percent. So it's all negotiated because it's union, non-unions at six percent and the unions are either six or seven. And it's a, when they put it in, in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, depending on the group. It was a five, five, five plan, employee puts in five, town puts in five, invest over five years. Um, and it's a lattice, it's twenty percent a year, um, so.
It's also boots on the ground, so they have, there's actually a woman who lives in Bethel, so they're like, those Voya reps are sitting at kitchen tables. Like, it's, it's a, the high touch platform.
Right, with, with the, um, with plant participants.
Yep, yep, so they're going to teachers' kitchen tables, because I talked to.
I guess the question that I raise is, is, you know, in, in the corporate world, I know the corporation. Has responsibility as the plan sponsor for selecting the investments and. The record keeper, if there is one. Of course, there's been a lot of litigation in the corporate world. Most of it not well justified, but, but from a very active plan just far.
Yeah.
Um, because that, they see money there, and I don't know if there's been anything similar in the municipal world. Or what our fiduciary responsibility, if any, is towards that plan.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, there are specific provisions, I know, under ERISA. For non-governmental plans.
Yeah.
That say, well, if you have your plan structured in such and such a way, or with, with well-balanced, diversified options. Then you, the sponsor, are not responsible for the investment choices made by your plan participants. Um, I hate to say that I'm so old that I helped draft some of those regulations, but, um. But I don't know what, how that works on the municipal side.
They have, they have the fiduciary three twenty-one protection too with Morningstar, whoever they partner with, so. It's like, because I talked to the Voya guy, uh, not that long ago. I don't remember the answer, because that was the first thing out of my mouth. And they could slap, if it's not on, I mean, that would be, that'd be a good reason to have it.
Yeah.
If they don't have the three twenty-one, because that indemnifies everybody. It, it's the Morningstar or, or, or. Whoever Voya partners with.
Somebody giving a blessing.
Yeah, and, and there's a process quarterly kind of behind the scenes.
We should probably understand.
Yeah, would you rather to see, I know November is usually a longer one because Milliman comes in, would you rather to see? Because I was gonna ask Mary, who's on our call, just add it to her notes for either our next meeting or the. Initially, I was thinking January, but would you rather try to see if they're available for November?
Um, if they're available, we might as well get into it, kind of pre-start too.
Yeah.
See what's happening. And the individuals, um, and they, they have choices. And the individual can make those choices with the help of Voya rep.
Yeah.
And, uh, is everyone matching, they're matching the.
They have to, so the plan, the plan right now on our side, the Board of Ed uses Voya as well for theirs. Um, our side is the employer, employee has to put in. Um, so it's not an option that we give them, uh, which costs the town more money, because some people wouldn't put the money in.
Right.
But all the uni contracts say it's mandatory contributions, we match a hundred percent.
Because it's the only retirement option for employees.
Correct.
And of course, they can put in quite a bit more under IRS regs.
They can't put any additional in ours.
No, but in there, they can make.
No, they can't, so the Voya plan is locked.
Okay.
They cannot make voluntary contributions to it. The town offers a four fifty-seven.
Okay.
That there's no match on.
Okay.
That they can use.
That's separate.
Yes, that's through Empower, that is with the state.
Right, yeah.
Uh, at the time that we went, the reason we went with Voya when we're doing all this is this, we. Uh, Voya had the state four fifty-seven, so it made sense for us to move to have it be the same vendor. And then one month, uh, within a year, the state went out to bid, the state pulled a four fifty-seven, a predential.
That's right, which became Empower, that's why I said, yep, yep, all coming back to me now.
So. And we had just gone through it all, setting up the four oh three B people. So we kind of left them separate, so they're separate, and it's worked for us, because as Mike pointed out. Maureen, our contact for Voya lives in town, uh, and actually our Empower rep lives in town too. So it's nice, and then they, usually when they come in quarterly, they sit in this room or upstairs. And they come in and one's on this side, one's on that side, and you know.
Yeah, so this is a watch plan, they can't put in more, but they do have option to a four fifty-seven, and they can take that twenty-four thousand. Or there are seven thousand more if they're a certain age, fifty or over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they, does anyone do that?
Yeah, so a lot of our employees, um, also contribute to the four fifty-seven.
Good.
Uh, so.
You know, that's good to know, because that's important for, um, you know, their future, that they're not gonna have a plan like this.
And the four fifty-seven plan, the state plan is run by the state controllers office.
Yes.
Right, as opposed to the state treasurer running the pension, the defined benefit plan.
Uh, I think it is the treasurer.
It is the treasurer, because that's the council that I'm on, and the treasurer runs that, but we have nothing to do with the four fifty-seven plan.
But one nice thing about the IRS ranks in this area, if you're contributing to that four K four oh three B. Um, you can contribute to the four fifty-seven full out and, and, um, and actually. Do a four fifty-seven full out, and still have the right to do.
Save a lot of money.
They can do a double dip, and that's all, it's never been changed. So, but someone has to be able to, let's say they're on social security.
Yeah, they're working their spouse.
And they want to take all their social security money and live on it.
Yeah.
Take from their pay of twenty-four thousand or thirty thousand, they can actually do it. Yeah, I've advised people on that, by the way.
Uh, and we, I know when we switched the four fifty-seven to the state, there's a little bit of pushback. Because there was a narrow window of what you could put it in, but the fees were like ten percent of what they were.
Of course.
Total planned assets.
Yeah. Because you're talking about the state's four fifty-seven, it's billions or, you know.
So what I just said, people should be made aware of that, a lot of people don't know it.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's, I, I didn't know that.
Yeah, well, it's in the code, you just have to know the code, and I'm an enrolled agent, so that's why I know it. Um, okay, is there any other further business?
So, one other thing, um, Scott from Milliman emailed me the other day. Um, he's still with, when, with Milliman, he's focusing more on the old, uh, the health side.
Yep, I got the same email.
Yeah, so we're getting a new rep, uh. Waylina?
Yeah, I spoke to her.
Alright, so I don't know if Scott will be out in November or if she'll be fully just a person.
I'll let you know before.
Okay, um. Um, other than that, other than having to start funding the Lo Sap in the budget next round, um, when. Mike and I talked about it, we were kind of too far along in this budget to then go, hey. Let's add some money, so we said, look, there's enough money in there to cover, right now, there's five years in there. Yeah. So it's not immediate, and we don't know, the hundred could, could become a hundred and twenty. It could go down to eighty, depending on what that population is doing, um. I know, like, some of the people in it are on the other side, we don't know what the, it's gonna, you know, and it is closed. But we should, at some point, have to do a deeper dive into the population and start looking at some of that stuff.
So this is, is this just for active volunteer firefighters?
So, they can still be, once they hit whatever the criteria is, like twenty-five years, they get. I wasn't super involved in it when they locked it, and then because it's been locked, it hasn't really been a big conversation about it. Uh, you have to have been active for a certain amount of time and be of a certain age. Uh, it's either like sixty or sixty-two or something like that to start collecting. They can still be an active volunteer. Because the last thing we want is somebody deciding, I'd rather have my three grand and not be an active, you know, like, um. And I think it was more viewed as like the little carrot.
So, thank you.
Grand scheme of things, it's not a lot of money, but when we have to start funding the budget.
When the administration was original for years done right out of the firehouses themselves.
And if I remember right, they had a different system for each firehouse.
Yeah, that, that's, that was one of the big battles.
And, and in its day.
That's, I'm sure that's a big.
But we're well past that now.
Uh.
So, so Brad, what's it gonna take to get this contract signed? It's a practical matter.
It's, I think we're there, Melanie, I think, is on vacation starting today, um.
Will you get it signed before the end of August?
Yeah, I would think so.
So when, when would you like Raj to send the docket sign to you for day, uh?
Whenever Melanie says.
Okay, alright, so, so you'll let me know and then I'll let Raj know. It's been sitting.
Well, now, what's the procedure, since we've approved it? Now, does management have to have a meeting to approve it in a group? Or does?
Because it's a contract, and they, like, even like the ISP, this board votes on it, but Dan signs it.
Right.
Um, so, I don't, it's a conversation with Dan if he wants the whole board or if it's him. Um, and I don't remember, like, six months ago, if the. Or does management have talked about it yet? I don't think so, I think they're waiting for this quarter then to vote the sentence.
And then they'll work it out.
Yeah, so.
But there's a meeting Tuesday.
Yeah, next Tuesday, but I don't, but with Melanie being away and to Spain.
It might not make the meeting.
Probably not that one, it'd probably be the next one.
So the next one will have to, hopefully have it on the agenda where they can do it.
Yeah, uh, I think, I would say we're at the point that. Maureen Stanley feels comfortable, they want to start looking at the ISP.
Yeah.
But, you know, this board also doesn't meet again until November, so like, you can do a special at some point, but. You know, I don't know, unless you see, this is what I would ask, even though we.
Done, right, without, we can, we can get the, we can get the wheels rolling, but we can't, but we, the operations side.
Yeah, but, but, th- this would be my request, once you have the signed agreement. When you, if you think there's enough changes in the ISP that we should move quicker than our next meeting. Send us a no, because we could do a.
But in the grand scheme of things, I mean.
Like, it's probably not.
I don't think that's the case, yeah.
I'm just saying, no, if, if, when you dig into it, you think there's something that's inherently not wrong. But could be so much better, obviously, the ISP is gonna be better, I would assume, you guys are gonna take a deep dive in it. If it's, if we're talking about just moving the ball slightly in the right favor, that probably could wait till November. You think there's a big move that should be made, we can get together, it's hard to get it formed sometimes, but if you get it formed.
We have a traditional sixty, forty, I said, occasions, but, no, there's gonna be nothing, Arsha.
Yeah, I don't understand.
I mean, you're not going to forty, sixty the other way.
Right.
Loading you up with.
Yeah.
It's still gonna be a basic sixty, forty, or fifty-nine, you know, forty-one or something like that.
Prudently managed now, so we're not gonna change it.
Yeah, so, and Dan, Dan, uh, somewhat up on this, but he, you know, spend, you and that sort of know what's going on.
Yeah.
I think he's on the emails.
Okay.
I know he meets with Melanie all the time, so I don't know if I'm up as part of it, but.
Okay.
Um, so.
So he should be pretty much, uh.
Yeah, he's definitely aware that they've been going back and forth on it.
Okay.
Getting over that. Um, and other than the change in the Milliman rep, um. I don't really have anything else really comfortable. Um, we are in negotiations right now to a reunions, so like, some of that, like, we talked about, uh. Uh, the fine contribution, there might be some changes in there, so.
You know, as far as the liability side, anything to do on that, liability?
Uh, oh, for that, I forgot about that piece of it, um, no. Um, there's really, really no major changes with the lap, there's, uh, workers comp, we go year to year. Karma, um, we've had some issues with stuff that they don't want to cover, but that's a double edged sword. We want some pushback on some things, we don't want them covering everything under the sun because it affects the premiums, but we also. Don't want them to be so stringent that it's add or hindered, so there's a balancing act there, you know.
And we're not expecting a big increase in premium or anything.
No, so the, on the lap, they could have gone up five percent, because we have a three-year agreement, we're in year two of that. Um.
It's not what?
Uh, liability auto and property, sorry, we do that, um, I know, you're.
I'm not an insurance person.
The other side of the insurance pension, you know more than the rest of us, this side is not, um. And the workers comp, they get flat, or they were down slightly, but relatively flat, so like, premium wise, we've been doing really well. Uh, workers comp has been coming down at a time that, like, salaries have increased, so even workers comp being flat. It's almost like a decrease because if salaries are up two point eight percent. In theory, workers comp should be up two point eight percent, so with it being flat means that we've been doing the right things, and we've been trying to limit some of that risk. Um, one of the big pushes that, uh, this reselectment has made over the last couple of months. Is through the, we had a retirement in highway, so we met with all the highway guys, just kind of get a state of the union to dig into it more. One of the things that we were lacking a little bit is, um, we got a little lack of days for PP, personal protection equipment. Um, so we spent a little bit of money to make sure everybody has what they need, uh. So I think we spent like forty grand on some equipment, but. If it saves one claim, just from a financial standpoint, it's lower than, and from a health and safety of people, obviously, you know.
We're still having all the meetings.
Yeah, we did quarterly safety meetings.
Safety meetings and all that, so. And our injury is not, um, what do you call it, out of respect, we're having small, small vendors.
Correct, we've been. Not, not, not real good, but, um, we've had a good run, but obviously, all it takes is one bad claim. Cost of course, so, but we're trying to do all the right things to limit our liability, so.
Alright, I think that pretty well lined it up, uh, uh, you'll have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Uh, second?
I'll make that second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, so what we have a pretty, pretty good calendar is, uh, the, uh, next meeting, I think that's November.